Okay, I'll call the meeting to order and number two is our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Number three is our attendance and all board members are present along with our two student reps, so welcome. Number four is the approval of our agenda items by Jen, second by Melissa. Any comments or questions? She said it. Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Number five is committee reports. So we'll start with our high school student rep and we have Jade Foster, correct? Oh, Foss, gosh, sorry, I changed your name. Jade Foss and new Miles Hendrickson, so welcome.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jade Foss and I'm the 12th grade representative. And for school, the first quarter has started and it's off to a great start and midtrims are already next week. That's a little crazy for me at least. And then for our activities, homecoming was last week and some numbers over 200 peak out shirts were sold and 370 tickets were sold for the dance, which is over 100 more than last year. So that was crazy and very hot, but it's okay. And then prep fest for all the schools, there was lots of energy and fun games and then seniors swept the juniors out powder puff.
Annandale sports are doing good. Tennis playoffs are next week and cross country just had a meet this weekend at Roy-Griac in the cities. Volleyball is on a hot winning streak, so that's good. And football is 4-0, so give it up for the sports.
Okay, thank you. Number two, elementary advisory.
We just met earlier this evening. We had a really great meeting and a lot of discussion. First, John Clipnis gave us a report on new staff. So Kara Jansky is a new fayed teacher and she's just really hit the ground running and has been having a great start to the school year. Enrollment in section, so he walked us through at each grade level about where the average class size is at. And we'll hear more this evening about the operating levy referendum, but it was noted that the levels of staffing in K through 5 feel really good right now. And so really wanting to maintain that size of class. Special ed, the caseloads are high. There was approximately 40 new special education students to our district. And again, kind of weaving in the operating levy referendum talk, if the levy does not pass, this would be an area that, you know, may see some changes and already the staffing there could use more. And so that's an area that John Clipnis definitely has on his radar for levels and staffing and such. Report on MCA scores. Overall, the scores at the elementary school look great, above state in reading and math. The literacy team is meeting tomorrow. There was a mandatory reading training by the state that they've been going through the last couple of years, but just talking about different ways to improve vocabulary, weaving in reading minutes at home, talked about the razzle-dazzle sheets that some students take home and just really wanting to brainstorm on ways to get kids to enjoy reading and do it a lot at home. Talked about Title I. There was a part of our Title I funding is correlated to what percentage of our students in our district are in the poverty level and 5% is a threshold for a lot of the funding. And we were at 4.93%. And so our funding for Title I was drastically cut from 143,000 to about 60,000. And right now, we have one staff member plus seven paraprofessionals that part of their salaries are paid for by Title I funds and they're very highly trained individuals. This is an area similar to special education where could even use more at this time. So that drastic change in funding is absorbed through the operating expenses by the district. And so just kind of discuss the challenges with that. Talked about daily basics for reading and math. There will be a math madness program that's starting in the fall for grades 2 through 5. Talked about cares. So they're the core values that are instilled at the elementary school, cooperation, assertion, respect, empathy, and self-control. So we had some dialogue, which will be continued with staff on those values. Just talked about, is there anything else that we want to weave in? Is there anything we want to revamp with the cares program? Talked about conferences. They're coming up in early November, the 5th, 6th, and 13th. Fire and safety drills. An email went out to families. There's five fire drills planned for the year, two are already done, and then five safety drills. The first one was today. And then also talked about levy information. So an update there on the school district's efforts as well as parent and community input from the Vote Yes for Excellence Committee. Talked about a lot.
All right, thank you. Middle school?
We had a meeting earlier this evening. There wasn't very many people there. It was Jen, two staff, a parent from the Vote Yes, and myself. The Vote Yes group, or Anna from Vote Yes, just spoke about kind of what they're seeing and how it's going when they're out and about and the feedback that they're getting. And just reminded everybody that early voting is happening now. Conferences will be on the 6th and the 14th. We had two new staff members step up, four students stepping up, Jordan Grease and Kayla Nica. So it's kind of exciting to see someone take it over and they're full of energy. So I think that'll be a great thing. They are just looking to increase student participation and looking into some more activity nights. We had conversation about the acoustics in the lunchroom. Just if you've ever been down there, you know, like the low ceilings and there's a lot of kids. And so it just gets to be really loud and it's not necessarily the kids hollering, but it's just the dynamics down there. So they're looking into some options for that. We had a donation of some air conditioning units for three of the classrooms. So they raffled those off during teacher workshop week. So three classrooms have air conditioning units now that will get installed once we get that electrical panel figured out. Talked about the power hour will be on Wednesdays and just starting with Wednesdays for now and will add more if needed, although they currently only have one staff member interested in doing that. But just also remembering that they have a study hall twice a week as well. So there will be a courage retreat for the 7th graders on October 21st. Then the parent just asked, I thought was a good question, just asking the staff members that were there if they prefer that students come to conferences or if it's better if they don't so they can have honest communication. And both staff members agreed that it's good to have the students come along so that the parents and the students are getting the same messages at the same time. So I thought that was interesting. Otherwise, the year's off to a great start and homecoming was super fun. And that's it.
Thank you. High school?
Yes, we met earlier this evening. Like Jade said, the dance was the most that they ever had. They said homecoming was the earliest that they've had and it was a lot of work to do in the summer. It was a positive start to staff and students. Access Learning Academy, the students redecorated. That is, it's located in the classroom in the media center and then they also have an area that's right next to that classroom. It's like a little study lounge. They have an alternate cafeteria back there for them. It's like a little kitchen area. So if they don't want to go right into our big cafeteria. Charlie had explained, the rigor is different, but not less. It's just a different way for them, more project-based. The work experience has an online component. There's careers class for work experience. Mrs. Shlafki meets with them a minimum of one time per week. There's three ways to do online there. It's work experience supplementary if we don't have the class and then if there's some kind of unique life experience that they need to have that. Let's see here. Oh, Michelle Wang presented on behalf of the Vote Yes. Thank you. And thank you to everybody that is part of that. Charlie asked what our needs are, asked everybody that was at the meeting. One parent, again, had said mental health, education, and it's more of like a home-based curriculum. Another parent commended our schools, middle school and high school, that we do a very good job supporting mental health. And then this one, so she had, a parent had asked about using only Google, but like in the real world, everybody uses Excel, which is true. We really need to try to help these kids somehow before they leave high school to understand how to use an Excel spreadsheet. We also discussed how important soft skills are. Like it's important to get good grades, but it's also important to have the soft skills. We, there was a leadership council meeting, so it was basically the department chairs and they had a training in AI. We had a very long conversation about AI, positives and negatives. Parent teacher conferences are October 6 from 3:00 to 6:30. Career Day is October 22 from 8 to 10. If you happen to know anybody that may want to speak, reach out to Jamie Shlafki. And then the next meeting is October 27 at 5:30 in the high school media classroom.
Thank you. Activities? No meeting, community ed?
So I met with community ed this evening and talked about a lot of things, but number one, they are looking for another member to join the advisory council. They hired three interns, I believe, this summer, but that they are doing a great job in sort of helping manage the workload there. There's a recreation position open, but they're being patient and hiring it till, I believe, the springtime where they think there's going to be some more graduates applying for it. Kids Club has been going great. Tiffany mentioned how great the high school workers and college workers are doing. Enrollment's very strong with 61 preschoolers making it full, 161 school age kids. There's some concern about the food programming and that cost will likely increase just due to ineligibility of the program that we were a part of last time, I think with the state. ECFE starts next week for enrichment programs. Numbers are down in the youth programs with adults, registrations staying steady for the summer. Other than that, the, today was their first lockdown drill and it went well with Tiffany emphasizing that she does send out the schedules for the fire and safety drills so parents are notified of when that's happening. And October 27 is the next meeting for more fall updates.
Thank you. On to Wright Tech.
There was no meeting. There was not a form.
Okay, no meeting at Wright Tech. Masiko?
Yes, we had a meeting on August 26 in the Howard Lake building. They did a fun summary that was broken down by programs, went through resignations, retirements, terminations, recommendation for employment. First day of school was August 25. They did a welcome back. They had new employee orientation on August 11. For professional development, they had a keynote speaker and vote. Align your beliefs mean be your own captain. Make intentional choices for exponential impact. There is a special education teacher cohort for new to Masiko teachers. It's a year-long cohort with virtual trainings. This is the second year they're doing that. They are partnering with Maple Lake for the REDAC training. They have two teachers that need to go through that. Teacher development and evaluation update and additive rubric for the speech. Director of Finance, negotiations are postponed until September 30. Federal allocations will be done before the end of the month. Our cash flow is doing wonderful right now through November. Thanks to all districts for paying on time. Thank you, Rick. You were the first one. Yeah, I asked. Audit prep, the first meeting will be, was September 4. We have a new director of educational programs and it is somebody who used to be on the board for Masiko. So she's very in tune with programming. She was at the wings building specifically just to assess the physical environment. But her main goal is to get to know all staff and administration. Next meeting, oh, is tomorrow 5:30 at, oh, we're going to meet at Cornerstones in Eastern Wright. We're going to take a tour of the building and then meet.
Thank you. Number six, community comments and concerns, which there are none. We'll move to number seven, the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Jen, second by Gina. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number eight is unfinished business. 8A is the enrollment projections for 25, 26 school year. And then 8B is the district enrollment summary, which we look at every month.
Yeah, and we looked at these, when you looked after the first week, you see that we were at 1,0951. We talked about how we like to give it another, you know, look at week two or week three to kind of get a better gauge of a true number of work, how many kids we actually have attending here because some schools start early, some start a little bit later. And sometimes we don't, sometimes we don't get the paperwork for those that have left us. And so now for two straight weeks, last two weeks, we've been at 1,942. This is, this is good. And when you look at how we left last year, we were at 1,0939. I know it's not a lot over that, but we graduated about 100, just, just under 140 students last year. And we brought in this year, we know the birth rates are down. And so we know that overall kindergarten classes have been lower, really statewide, nationwide. And so we had a 127 come in. And so if you look at just those two numbers, we should have been down by about 11 kids or so. And the fact that we're ahead of that is a really good sign. So we should feel good about that. I know it's only a few kids ahead, but it's a, it's a good sign.
Anybody have any comments or questions on that? So number nine, new business. 9A operating levy referendum update.
Yeah, this has been talked about a little bit already by some of the board members here with their committee reports, but we are in full, full on getting the message out there mode. It was a busy week last week, speaking to townships, the civic groups, Lions and Quanis, presence at the art crawl, talked to a lot of people there. It's, I'll say again, that the site that we have available, even if people feel like they're very strong supporters and don't really need the information or need to want or want to hear the information from us, really just, we just really encourage people to go there and, and make sure that you're informed so that if you hear anything from those in your, in your group or people that you talk to, that you can with confidence go to the site and say, or tell them that, hey, there's information out there, lots of information out there. But you'll continue to see and hear more information about it at different events. We have, we'll be speaking to the chamber coming up here in a couple of weeks. The tour continues, so to, so to speak. So we've been pleased with the number of people that have been turning out for these events that we've had. Even Quanis group was a little larger than normal. Lions group does quite a few people there. And again, the townships that we've been going to. Any questions from the board on any of the, the microsite or anything that, any feedback or input on the, on the levy itself at this point? You'll, you'll see a lot more coming up. We talked, we talked at one point earlier about, we had a very generous donor step up and pay for a consultant for the school district to go through this. So it's not costing the district anything, but it's, they've been very helpful. And we meet, meet on a weekly basis. And many of you I know have been part of that, rotating through. But you'll see more testimonials and things like that coming out in short video clips from some of our staff. And they're really powerful when you, when you can hear our staff talking about how the last couple of years has affected them and things that they're worried about in the future. So we're just making sure that people are informed the best they can be.
I just wanted to say it's been really great working with the public relations firm and how the site and the information is very fluid. So, you know, we can give feedback from listening to stakeholders, to community members and say, hey, we've heard this question come up. This has come up a couple of times. Someone was wondering about this. And there's really a robust FAQ section on the website and there's a connect with us form, as well as, of course, laying the foundation of the challenges and the plan and the cost and where to vote and how to vote and all of that. So I just, I would say to community members, keep giving feedback, keep asking questions, and keep educating yourself. Like you said, even if you're a major supporter, great, you can help be boots on the ground and advocate and at least tell people where the information and the facts are.
Yeah, and that, that, that reminds me to the, the form submissions that contact us. Like if you have questions, the emails from that website go right to me. And, and if I don't have the answer, we're going to get it because we can work with our school financial advisors, Lers, we can work with the county. And a lot of it is Rick and I sitting down because some people really want some numbers and they want to know how, you know, how do we get to this point? And, and so we can, we can formulate some just really, really good responses, detailed responses for, for folks that are really interested. And we've been doing that. So, yeah. And then as we hear the questions, we do put them on the FAQs too. So that, that's a good point, Jenna, because those frequently asked questions, there's a lot on there. And there's, there's a lot of detail on there. For some people, if you go right to that spot, if you have any questions floating around in your head, there's a really good chance that it's going to be answered there.
I think too, just something that I've been proud of forever for our district is that we're very accessible, right? We're very approachable. If you don't want to fill out the form for the FAQ, you can call Tim, Rick, us. We've met with many people over the years, just small group meetings. If, you know, maybe it's one person has a question or a concern and, and they bring their neighbor in also, totally fine. Like we, we welcome people to come and talk to us anytime, not just about an operating levy, but we've, my time on the board, we've had many, many conversations with community members and we welcome that. And, and again, it's just something that I'm very proud of, that we, I think, do very well here. So keep them coming if you have any. And thank you for reaching out because sometimes, sometimes it's kind of hard to reach out, right? It's kind of, not everybody wants to ask their questions. So thank you for doing that.
One thing too, I want to highlight too, Crystal, can you go to the vote section? Early voting has started. That's been talked about a little bit tonight too. September 19, so last Friday, early voting started. And there's a few ways that you can do that. This page really lays everything out. And we've talked here before too about with the open senate seat, District 29, that it does make this maybe a little bit confusing, but we want to make sure that people know where they're going to go to vote. we want to make sure that people know where they're going to go to vote. And right now, you can fill out a, an application and you can send that into the county. We can send it in for you, actually. If you get it to us, we can send it in. They'll send a ballot right to your house with a self-addressed or stamped envelope, and you can send it right back to them, and so you can just vote from, from home. So that's what the ballot looks like. Crystal has it up right there, or the application, sorry, the application. And we have some plans too to get these in the hands of our, of our parents, you know, just to make this as convenient as possible for people, just to vote, period. We just need people to get informed and to cast their vote. But this site, this particular site, the vote tab on here, it will let you know depending on what township you are in, where to go. So if there's any questions about that, for the most part, it's going to be exactly how it was last November for you. The two, the two townships in our district that are going to be a little bit different are the two that are in Stearns County, Linden Township and Fairhaven Township. They will actually on Election Day come to the Anandale City Hall and vote. And that's actually an agenda item coming up here. We have an agreement with the city that they're going to be running that part for us. So otherwise, the early voting for Stearns County residents will actually be at Stearns County Courthouse. They'll have to go to their courthouse. Anything else, Crystal? Crystal is right in the forefront of all that. Anything else you can think of that we need to share?
Yes, if you don't want to fill out paper applications, you can have a little bit of the conversation. I don't have to be able to access the company people. I have to.
Perfect. Okay.
And just on behalf of us, I would just thank you, Crystal, for all your work. You obviously have your normal job within our district. And then when we do have a vote, I know you get a lot thrown on your plate and a lot of extra duties, and you're very knowledgeable. So yes, thank you for all of your work. We really do appreciate that. Is there anything else? Okay.
Do you want to go through any of the PowerPoint?
I don't think so.
Yeah, I think we're good.
Okay.
Yeah, the, we do have the PowerPoint attached to this too. The, I guess they call them slide decks now, maybe on PowerPoint, maybe Excel, maybe? I don't know. This is, we're not going to go through all these slides tonight, but I just want the board to kind of see and our community to see, this is when we go to do these presentations. We don't always have the ability to do an electronic, you know, hook up to a projector or anything like that, so we do, we can print these out too. That's typically what we've been doing when we go to these groups and just go through these slides. But a couple of them, slide number five, and there's the process, if you want to go to that right there. Yeah, this is one thing that we get some questions about, like, how did you come up with this? You know, why did you decide to go out for the levy? We, we addressed the challenges prior to this, but why did you decide on, how did the board decide on the $750 and, and the 1.4 million for the year, you know? I just, I think it's important for us and board to certainly chime in, but, you know, really, it's, it's, it's years and years of analyzing the budget and taking a look at the financial trends, as it says here, really looking at our enrollment, studying that and following the trends there too. We know what happened last year with us losing quite a few kids last year. That had a major effect on us. But having those works, our listening sessions too in the spring, we really got a lot of valuable information from them, from our community and from our staff, as far as helping us to give us that feedback that we needed, I feel like, or the board maybe needed to decide on that number, kind of what is it going to be? And just as Katie alluded to earlier, just really inviting people in and having them talk to us. We had several conversations last spring and into the summer, just people that have questions about all of these things. And so all of those things led to the decision, and any board member, you can, you can add on to that if you'd like to, but that is one question we get quite often. I think that when you, there's lots of different things that you can look at to say, you know, why 1.4 million for that year? Why is it 750 per pupil? And you don't need to look too far back. I mean, in the spring, we had to cut 1.2 million, and that's, that equates out pretty well right there. Our cross subsidy alone is about 1.5 million. That's the money that special education is not fully funded. We have an incredible special education team here in the district, all the way through. We have a very good reputation for special education. We get a lot of, and we love them all. We love our special education students and we're here to serve them the best that we possibly can. But the state doesn't fully fund special education as it should. And for us, it's about a $1.5 million shortfall that has to come out of our operating expenses. And so there's lots of different ways like that to look at it that, that makes a lot of sense. So I don't know if any comments from the board on that and how we came up with that number, how we come up with that number, but.
I'll just add and say that I think over the last few years with the cuts that we've made, I think we've been more, first of all, public and open with what it costs for every staff position. We are very aware of every cost and how much it is. So it's, it's been easier to project, I think, to make sure that we're asking for the right amount because we've been so involved in, you know, we saw, we gave those spreadsheets to everyone about the list and what it costs to keep this and this and this, every position and every program. We know the cost of raises, we know the cost of health insurance, we know all of the costs now, and I think we've never, I mean, for sure, I've never been more informed of the budget, and so that's how I think we can be so confident in asking for this number when, and also not putting an overburden on the taxpayers, which we obviously don't want to do either.
Yeah, the other, the other thing that we have been getting questions out of making sure that people are understanding is, you know, we, we have a lot of folks in our district that have lots of land, and that's a concern of theirs. And I think automatically you think, you know, a levy is going to cost me a lot of money. And for those that have land, it's just, tell anybody that will, will listen to this is that for those folks, you're only, you're only taxed on your house, your garage, and one acre. That is a big, that's a big deal, because you can, you can own land that's worth over a million dollars and still only have to pay on maybe $300,000 of that or be taxed on $300,000 of that, which is about $19 a month. And so if you get questions about that, that's, that's a, that's a major point that make sure, we need to make sure that people are aware of.
I think another thing too that we've heard a lot about is maybe complaints about people saying, well, my neighbor's their second house, you know, why aren't they paying tax taxes? Well, we don't have any say in that. So a lot of times I feel like people sort of blame us and say, well, make sure they're being taxed, but like, we don't have a say in that. So I think it's important for people to understand that.
Yeah, so seasonal housing, unless it's homesteaded, you're not paying a tax on it, they're not paying on it. And those, I think it's important too to, that same vein, Dylan, they don't vote either. They don't, they don't get, they don't get to cast a ballot either if they don't, aren't homesteaded within our district, so.
I'll just talk about my own experience. I have land that, you know, on our property, and so if I would look at like the graph that we have, the tax calculator, just on paper, it would look like I'm going to pay a lot more than I do. So I find it super helpful, because if you want to know exactly what you're going to pay on the website, the Cardinals Excellence website, you can just, or email Ellers, and they get back to you quite quickly, actually, and you just fill out your name, your address, and let them know. And Crystal is kind of pulling that up right now, thank you. But it's super helpful to know what exactly you pay. It's easy if you live in the city of Anandale, right? And you can kind of guesstimate if you have a 400,000 house or 300,000, whatever it is. Yep, that's that graph that I was talking about. So if I looked at my value, it would say that I was going to pay a lot more than I actually will, because I'll only pay for my house, my garage, and an acre of land. So I think that's super helpful to, for people to realize that too. And we are celebrating that our enrollment is up by three kids, right? Like, kids, we want kids here, we want to educate the kids. We know we do a fabulous job in Anandale to educate the kids, and they help our budget, right? So it's another thing, we want to keep them here. And we know we're attractive, so we, we are confident that when people look around, that Anandale is a very desirable school district. Not only just our area that we live in is so desirable, but our school district obviously is too, so. Okay, let's move on to nine B, approval of the agreement between the city of Anandale and ISD 876 for the purpose of administering the district's special election to be held on November 4th, 2025.
Make a motion on the agreement between the city of Anandale and the school district.
Motion by Jen, second by Jenna. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nine C, consider approval and adoption of the resolution appointing election judges for the November 4th, 2025 school district special election, which this is a roll call vote, but first we need a motion and then a second. Motion by Gina, second by Jen. Any comments before we vote or questions? Okay, so Dylan. Jen?
Aye.
Melissa? Jenna?
Aye.
Gina?
Aye.
And I. Motion carries. We'll move on to nine D, review MCA scores. We have John Minkie here for that update.
And I did leave some paper copies up here. So if you just want to take one, if you'd like one, you don't have to, and then just make it away. It's easier to maybe look at one of those. Each year I come up here and kind of give you a rundown of how we did on our MCA scores from the previous year. These were taken in April of 2025-ish. Scores were embargoed until the end of August, and then we started doing some calculations. And we get the paper copies beginning in September, and we've sent those out last week, Tuesday. So if you have a son or daughter in the district, you probably received it already this week. I upload them to campus every year, so teachers have access to them, and so do staff, and then we keep preparing for the next year. But let's look at the first one. The first one is going to be just the overall. Every year I kind of present this. Remember, if we look at the MCA reading on the left-hand side, this is grades three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and 10 that are all included in this, so we're looking at the district full reading scores. You can see that our Anandale scored a proficient rate of 60.3%. Proficient, proficient means that they met or exceeded the MCAs that year. And you can see how the state did. So we actually did very well this year. We had a nice increase in reading. Math on the other side, same thing, 60% for Anandale, and that is grades three through eight and 11th grade also. So 10th and 9th do not take that, neither do seniors, of course. The bottom graph, I kind of explained just a little bit to make sure you see what it means. If you go down to 2025, the gray bar means the state participation rate. And this last year, the state was at 93.1% participation. So every year we talk about those opt-outs, those students that didn't take the test because their parent let them opt out of it by refusal, or sometimes it's, it's even just a behavior thing. A student comes to school that day and they just cannot do it. Gina, you're nodding your head. Sped is probably one of the biggest ones right there. I mean, we, we want them to be a student first, and the test is going to set them off. There's no way we're going to set them off and put them through the roof. So there might be some refusals on that, and the parents are, of course, notified at the same time. But our, our participation rate, you can see, is a little bit higher, so we're at 95.2 for last year. And we're right in the, we're usually in that 95, 94, 96 range, I guess. The kind of orangish bar is our number of opt-outs. We didn't have as many opt-outs as the year before. Our 10th graders, I think, that took it a little more serious this year, that's kind of usually the highest hit we get is in 10th and 11th grade. You know, they're looking at college exams instead, you know, they're looking at other things besides the MCAs, they want to opt out of them. This last year, we did try to use the MCA math test in 11th grade as an ACT, and I think we had less opt-outs because we gave them the scores back and we predicted what they'd get on the ACT test two weeks later. And we used that as kind of a, I don't care, I guess. In 10th grade, we talked about the, the Read Act and how interventions come into play in screening, and so we said, you know, if you do, do a nice job, you wouldn't have to take care of those things. You're showing us that you're reading on, on grade level. So that 10th grade, we'll show you the score later, but it was really good. There also in the middle school, we had a high participation rate in the 7th and 8th grade, where we did have some opt-outs the year before, so. So that's that one. If we want to go to the next one, which has a lot of data on it, this is ongoing. I keep this going because I think it actually shows us a lot of trends, and you can pick out, pick apart different things in here, but just to see what it is, on the left-hand side, you can see 3rd grade math all the way to 11th grade, 3rd grade reading all the way to 10th grade, and then the 5, 8, and 10th grade science. Science is only taken three different times in the high school career. Then on the bottom, those are the graduating classes. So you can see last year's 3rd graders over on the far right-hand side, a graduating class of 2033, they only have one test because they took their first test in 3rd grade. On the left-hand side, the graduating class of 2026 is done, they've taken every MCA test there is. The senior year, they're looking at other things on the horizon, I guess. So you can see kind of the scores and where they're at. I'll, I'll throw a few things out that I've, I've noticed. Green is good, red is maybe not so good. So you can see that we have a lot of green, that's a good thing. When we compare ourselves to the state of Minnesota, we do very well. The first number in the column is the proficient rate, so that tells us that we've either met or exceeded on the MCAs and what percent for that test, that grade level test. The second number is the number of points or percentage points that were above or below the state. So for example, let's look at graduating class of 2033, they're 4th graders, this last year. So if you notice in 3rd grade, they took the 3rd grade reading and they were red, so they were below state average by 1.8%. Then this last year, they picked it up, so that's a highlight, I think. I mean, they turned it around and now they're above state average, and hopefully our teachers are working with those students. And you can also see then, if you look at the column vertically, that there are certain grades that test better than others. What the reason is, I'm not sure, but you know, there's some higher points and some lower points that are, that are there. A couple other things I'll, I'll put out there, 7th and 8th grade, middle school, they actually had a pretty nice turnaround. If you take a look at, like the graduating class of 2029, in math, they went from 16% over state average to 26% over state average. So we did talk to Lori Clipnis and we patted her on the back. And then reading, they did have a 3% gain. And then if you take a look at the 7th grade, you can see they went from 8.8% over state average in math to 21%, and then from 8 to 17 in reading. So there were some high points in middle school. The big one for high school would be the, the 10th grade. I said we had more participation and they took it more seriously, I think. And so you can see that there was a nice big jump in that 10th grade reading score. Overall, we are doing well, but there are some places that we can always fix and we can always work on. If you look at individual students, and that's why those scores are important that we send out, there's information on the back, tells you that you can look at some Lexile scores, learning locator numbers, so parents can get help. It's on the website of ours where they can go to get help, so they can work with their student if they, if they want to, if it's a little lower than they expect. But now let's look at the science down below. So every 10 years, they look at the standards, and I got to think about this. Science had new standards, and they implemented the, the new standards, and then now we have a new test. So this last year in 2025 was actually the new MCA test. And we, when we say MCA, as we say MCA 3 or 4, so the Series 3 is everything except science. Now science has been up, been bumped up to MCA 4, so it's a brand-new test. It's never been given before, so we can't compare scores from the 25-year to the 24-year. So all these numbers that I have here really don't make any, make any sense anymore with the new test. So they pushed that score release out, so they're not going to release them, well, they have released them, I know, but can't say anything, they're embargoed. have released them, I know, but can't say anything, they're embargoed until October 1st. So, my lips are sealed, sorry. And, and it doesn't mean anything anyway, because the state hasn't told us what the state average is. So really, I can't compare, like, is our score good or bad? I don't know. So nothing will be until October for those.
Why don't hold their scores so long?
Well, this is, it's a brand-new test, and there was some free response on it. So there's actually some, you know, response where the students had to actually answer a question, not just pick A, B, C, or D. So it took longer to, to actually come up with a standard on that. So, just FYI, then the English test is coming up new, and then there's going to be a new math test. So every year when we have these Series 4 tests, you're probably going to see a delayed push-out. But that's just the way it is. So we'll see when those scores come in, and we'll, we'll add them to the list, and we'll see where we're at statewide. Any questions?
I'm just curious, like, we know what, what you guys, the school district, does with these test scores, and how you just kind of dive in and try to pick, pick different areas that maybe we need to work a little harder on, or like, things that went really well, or, but what does the state do? I mean, like, how do they dive in? Like, what are they looking for?
That's a good question. I don't know what they're looking for, because I really don't care what the state does with them, I care what our teachers do with them.
Okay.
Every year, then, right after this, they, they release benchmarks. So they tell us on each one of the strands for the standards and how our students did, I release those to the teachers. They got them about two weeks ago. So when they look at, let's say, 3rd grade reading, they know which standards they did well on and which ones they might need to work on. And so, we try to give the, the staff as much information as we possibly can. The, the state, it's not supposed to dictate everything, so, I, you know, and it's not really dictating our curriculum, it's just showing our teachers a little bit of the, the high points and maybe some of the low points that they can go back and look at, so.
How do you think the READ Act is affecting this, or?
So the READ Act is mandates that were put out a few years ago, that, that we're catching up with. Basically, there's some screening involved with reading. Every student should read at grade level is what the READ Act is. So things that we've done in the elementary with interventions, the middle school with Principal Sable and putting in that wind time and that nest time is very, I mean, very crucial. I think it's, I think it's going to help. I think hopefully our reading scores will, will show. I mean, if you noticed, in some of our grades, the reading scores are lower than our math scores. And so if we get more intervention help and, and we pay attention to those, I think we'll, we'll do a little better. If a student's not reading at grade level, we're trying to get help to that student now. I think it's, it's out there. And in the high schools, I work more with Mr. Barker than anyone else with the high school scores. We do have Missy Fee that works with John Clipnis quite a bit, and then Victoria Beckman is probably the, the lead over at the middle school with Jen Sable. My biggest thing is, it's too cool, you know, at high school, it's too cool. I don't need intervention help, I don't want to be special, I don't want to be pulled out, I don't want to be singled out. So that's the struggle that we have. Because we have to screen them and say, okay, you're not cutting at that grade level, so now we need to help you. And they don't want the help, they just want to keep flying under the radar, so.
Anybody have anything else for John? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. I was just going to say, this is one page of data, but just hats off to all of the amazing educators in our district. This right here is just a testament to the wonderful teachers and staff that we have here. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to 9E, consider approval of proposed property tax levy. Rick's going to go through this with us.
Yes, so if you look at the attachment, you'll notice the biggest thing, if you go down to the very bottom, there's a reduction of 6.39%. And the biggest reason for that is the change in enrollment from last year, this time last year, to now, you know, 3rd week in the school year. So earlier Tim said that we ended last year with 1,939 kids, but this time last year, we had 1,975. So when you go in from 1,975, because that's when we did this last year, and we're, now we're at 1,942, you know, that's 33 kids, so that's a lot of money that's going to be reduced. So that's why we're, you see overall, we're a reduction of $385,000. So I can quickly also go over some of the other changes that we have. Bond issues, you know, every year, we make, it's just like a mortgage payment, you make a payment and then you pay less, you know, the next year, so that's what that is. The operating capital, that actually went up, but that was because the legislature shifted. We used to get more, we had more state aid last year, but they needed to make a cut, so they shifted it to the taxpayers. So for the Anandale School District, the legislature shifted $24,000 from state aid to local taxes. CTE, Career Technical Levy, there was an increase in that, and that's just, last year, we, we had a new instructor, so we saw more projects being made. And then the post-employment, other post-employment, we had fewer retirees qualifying for the benefit, and that was a reduction of $25,000. The prior year adjustments, that was $70,000 reduction, and that was all based on prior year enrollments. Then if you go down to the levy spread on market value, you can see that the voter-approved referendum levy decreased by $22,000, the local option levy decreased by $236,000, and the equity levy decreased by $46,000. And all of those were enrollment changes. And again, and just like every year, this time of year, we ask you to approve the maximum amount, so if the state recalculates anything or notices that they have any errors on their calculations, we can still get the full amount. So I, we're requesting that you approve the maximum amount tonight.
Anybody have any questions for Rick? So I'm looking for a motion for the maximum school district levy.
To ask for the maximum amount.
Good. Motion by Jen, second by Melissa. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 9F, consider approval and adoption of the September Resolution Accepting Donations. Those are listed again every month. We are lucky enough to get donations to our school district, which we're very grateful for, but we would need to approve those. Motion by Gina, second by Jenna. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 9G, consider approval of the following policies in the review cycle. Number one is 403 Discipline Suspension and Dismissal of School District Employees, which is a three-year review with no changes. And the second one is 404 Employee Background Checks, three-year review with no changes. Motion by Melissa to approve both policies, second by Gina. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 10, information items. 10A, we will have a work session here at the Anandale Elementary School, Monday, October 13th, at 6:00 PM here in the Media Center. This work session will not be recorded or livestreamed due to a scheduling conflict. And then B is, our next monthly meeting will be here at the elementary school in the Media Center, Monday, October 27th, at 7:00 PM. Anything before we go? Need a mo, whoops? Oh. Oh, that, okay, sorry, I'll correct myself. It is not, not to being recorded or livestreamed due to a scheduling conflict. It was something that we decided when we had our MSBA work session, or training, work train, or school board training that we discussed then, that was recommended not to have that recorded or livestreamed. Thank you, Crystal. Thanks. See, she's it, she is good. Yes, thank you. So I need a motion for adjournment?
Salute.
By Jen, second by Gina. All those in favor?
Aye.